Okay, it is 6:30 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special call meeting. It is for the presentation of the budget and it is also to consult an attorney. Let's see. I will do the indication and Mr. Clay will do the pledge for us. If everyone would bow your head, please. Dear Heavenly Father, as we remember yesterday, Memorial Day, we seek blessings and thank you to all those who have served, are serving, and continue to serve this great nation so we can be free. Lord, we thank you for the ultimate sacrifice you gave, your only Son, so that we can truly be free. Lord, we are grateful for all you do for us. We are blessed that you love each one of us so much. Lord, it is my prayer that all will come to you, know you, and love you. Lead us and guide us. In your name we pray. Amen. Mr. Clay?
Please, ma'am. I'm pleased to lead the Justice Department of the United States of America and to be a republic for religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we're going to do the introductions and before I start around the room, I just wanted to let everybody know that Mayor Tim Setsons is out of town and Ms. Janelle Robinson, she is remote. Janelle, can you say hello, please?
Hey, boss.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, can we start with you for the introductions?
Yes, Twig Ronalds, Town Manager.
Jason Joyner, Diesel.
Ashley Anderson, Town Attorney.
John Lawrie.
Keith Clay.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
John Hinton.
Jeff Bacon.
Legal Booker.
Thank you very much. So we have an agenda before us this evening and I need it to be approved. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I approve of the agenda as presented.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
And I'll get second. All right, with the motion to approve the agenda as presented, I'd like to call the vote to order. May I, if you approve it, will you please say yea?
Yea.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Mr. Manager, we will turn the presentation and discussion of the 2025-26 budget over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. President, if you want to go up there, I'd like to sit in this presentation here. They're trying to get the presentation up to the public, it's been a bit, and we are having some streaming difficulties on top of it. It's been a technical day of challenges. I would like to start by thanking the staff for their hard work, input, and hard work in putting this budget together. Tonight, what I'm presenting is a proposed recommended budget. It is not concrete. There's several more steps that need to be considered before the budget process is complete. One of those is, I'm going to record in between now and your next regularly scheduled meeting that y'all schedule a special meeting for public input only on the budget. This will be available to the public tomorrow. Of course, tomorrow morning, if we'll have copies for them either electronic or in paper, just come by and sign a PRR request. We'll get you in and out in like five minutes. Or if you want electronic, if you so choose, we can make that happen also. So in the recommended budget, there's a lot of recommendations. Again, this is not concrete. It is recommended. So I think they're getting that up, so that's awesome. Top. Top. To the left. To the right. Right there. Nope. To the right. Right there. Ah, okay. So council, what you have here is the same presentation that's on the projector there for the public. First thing is, turning the page, is the Summerfield Vision Statement. This is our vision statement that was adopted by prior councils in 2008, still stands for us this day and time. And that's always something to be cognitive of as we develop the budget. Next page, please. So the next page here is a letter to you, to the mayor, and to the council, to Finance Committee, Summerfield citizens, and area stakeholders. Another eventful year here in Summerfield has shown that our town is growing in population, it's growing in tax base, and desired services. Citizens are excited to see the major projects of Vandera, A and Y, and Water Tank are moving forward and are becoming a reality after many years of planning. Summerfield has been a limited services town for many years, but this year, with the threat of the North Carolina House Bill 801, a study in Paper Town, citizens are receptive to growing our services to keep our charter while balancing the desires and expanded service offerings. Citizens continue to express to us that they enjoy our community events, parks, recreation facilities. With this citizen input, staff plans accordingly to formulate a budget around the residents' wants, interests, and needs. So that's kind of a preview there, if you will. My executive summary is, as the Budget Officer and Assistant Finance Officer, I propose that the 2025-26 budget of $10,865,619, as presented, the tax rate would increase to five cents per $100 property value. The reason that I'm proposing this tax increase is, if you remember in Mr. Joyner's discussions with you, it was his recommendation that we go to what's called the 2000 standard. So all towns that have been incorporated from the year 2000 to date, by general statute, you have a minimum tax rate of five cents. We did not have that. We still don't have that current. And that we have four services. That is, if you were to be incorporated today, that would be the minimum you would have to do as a town in order to be incorporated, have a charter. We were incorporated in 1996. We needed one service and there was no minimum tax rate. So this budget here that is proposed and recommended to you all is bringing us in line with that 2000 standard. And that's what I'm kind of calling, if you remember the days of ISO 9000 standard, this is saying 2000 standard. So with that being said, $2 billion, our current property valuation, and this includes the de-annexed property being taken out, is $2,404,228,500. The current tax rate of 275 has remained unchanged since the 2014-15 budget. So I'll stop right there. So in 10 years, this town board has not raised the rates on the citizens since 2015. And I'll note that during that same period of time, inflation has gone up 28.7%. 28.7% during that same 10-year period. Adjustments were made to the fee schedules this year to better cover operational costs and provide efficiencies. That's the recommended fee schedule that you all have, something certainly to consider in your consideration of adopting this budget in the future. The Finance Committee has also recommended this budget during their May 19 meeting. I talked to the Chair today. We plan on having another Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, excuse me, Monday at 6:00 PM to go over these numbers. But in whole, they have recommended this budget and they understand the five cent tax increase. The town currently has no outstanding debt. The budget lines the difference between the total expenditure revenue projections by appropriating $8,430,000 from grants and $57,210 from fund balance. You'll see later on in the slides that this is the lowest amount of appropriation in the last decade, with the exception of one year, that we've appropriated from the fund balance, balance our operating budget. And this could change depending on y'all's desires. If you go up, want to increase some of the line items, or go down on some of the line items, overall, we could change that number. So I want to make that clear to you, that you understand that this is just the recommended budget. We could appropriate more for fund balance for projects y'all want to do, or we could appropriate less. The budget will fund that identified priorities, increase services without requiring new debt service, and the town's financial health is strong and illustrated with the overall fund balance, assets, and tax rates. Our investments continue to be monitored regularly by staff, the Finance Committee, and the council, and the reserves are well in excess of $7 million per 2023 independent audit. Mr. Brewer, a couple of months ago, actually cited that back to you from our audit. So we've got a lot of reserve there. Some of that is earmarked for some of these major projects that are coming along, but the majority of it is not earmarked, it's unrestricted. In other words, you can use it for anything you want to, as far as that goes. In this budget, the recommended budget here, the new initiatives. So these are the things that I'm recommending for this year in this budget. Signs, this would be the welcome sign, and informational sign at 220 and 150 possibly is the welcome sign to promote community events and more announcements for the town. Street lighting, this would be an added service to comply with that 2000 standard. Public safety contract, that would be another service where we would look at contracting with the sheriff to provide a certain amount of services. So if you're community policing services and stuff, that would account for a second service. An in-house billing for trash. So our contract for our trash collection comes up for bid. We will start that process sometime in the August timeframe, July harvest timeframe, and the winning bidder, my proposal would be that we do the billing in-house, we're not increasing any staff, we would just buy the equipment, the posters, the envelopes. We would do the billing in-house quarterly and we would pay the trash collector, whatever company gets that winning bid, we would pay them the money for that. And so that would add a third service. So we've already got planning, so I'm going to recap that for everybody. Street lighting will be one, public safety contract would be two, in-house billing or trash contract would be three, and zoning would be four. So that would get us the four services. And assuming that y'all do approve the five cent tax increase, that would bring us in line with the standard of towns 2004 by the General Assembly. In this budget is a public records request. Currently, you saw my weekly report yesterday, we have 142 public records requests outstanding, and we need to hire a position full-time. It's a permanent part-time, which is going to cost $40,000 a year just to handle public records requests.
Is that interesting? Do those records requests come from, is that collectively, or does a bulk of them come from, say, one entity or one person?
Those 142 represent everybody who has, who was asked for them.
Is there like a...
We do have a core of about a handful of people that do most of the records requests, but that represents everybody, that 142. I don't have any further breakdowns as far as, you know, as far as that goes, Mr. Analyst.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're fine. The next is, and this has been an axe of mine, and I'm sure frustration of mine, it's a frustration of staff, is our video streaming equipment just doesn't work. It doesn't work. We brought in a consultant, hooked everything up, trained staff, and it's still not working. I did get a proposal on that, so that is included in this to have updated. And my proposal this year would include a big screen back here so that right now, so that y'all have the turn mic, you can look there, the public can look here with another big screen here, and we would also be able to live DNF. So that's in your consideration, one of my recommendations. The next is a strategic plan. Funding for that is a long-term strategic plan about where we need to go. Obviously, that's one of the big things the General Assembly is looking at smaller towns is, do you have a plan where you're going to go from here, one year, three year, five year, 10 year? And that's something that's updated constantly. It takes a lot of public input and continual input, but, so the funding for a strategic plan is in this recommended budget. The next is an MPA intern, the Master of Public Administration. Over the next six months, we have four big major projects, and I need a right-hand person to help me with some of that research and some of that bidding and writing documents. And so what better way than to get an MPA student either from Appalachian or UNC Greensburg and help them get some experience, so let's get some good mileage out of it. So the funding in there is requested. The next is a website update funding. Our website needs to be updated, it needs to be more intuitive, it needs to be, you know, just better service for our citizens, because that's recommended here. Baseball netting, we got hit on our mock ocean inspection by the North Carolina League Municipalities, who is our insurance carrier. Then on field number three, we needed a taller baseball net. As you well know, we're having tremendous success. We're booked every weekend with a waiting list out there, and the fly balls from the baseball that actually play on that field are a hazard. And so they strongly recommended that we replace the baseball netting out there, going higher in height. And the last thing is a 3% coal raise for employees. I know I talked to some of you individually about starting that in January, but after looking at employee salaries in the region, we're already behind, and I would hate for us to fall further behind. So that would be effective in July, that 3% coal raise is recommended. That is the new initiatives, and I'll stop right there for questions from the board, anything in general. I know you haven't had time to study anything as far as those new initiatives, but, and again, my recommendation is for y'all to take this one-on-one and two-by-twos and let's have some in-depth discussions with each other and with me, and hear from the public. And then on the 10th, I'm proposing that at 4 o'clock, we come together and have a workshop of this budget for a couple of hours. We have a quick dinner break and then resume our normal business, and that's the normal business meeting. And anytime that y'all feel comfortable, you can authorize the clerk or myself to schedule a public hearing, but we need 10 days by state statute to schedule that public hearing. And keep in mind, we have to have this budget, whatever budget y'all decide on, on June 30th, adopt.
While you're saying that, can we go ahead and try to schedule that because we only have a week, two weeks before our next meeting?
You can schedule it now for June 10th. You can schedule anytime from 10 days on, but again, we have to be, we have to have it adopted by June 30th, which we have to give the public 10 days notice before the public hearing. I'm recommending that you have a public input meeting prior to that public hearing so that when y'all put the finishing touches on the budget directly to, that you've got the public's input, you've got the Finance Committee's input, and then you'll have another public hearing. But yes, ma'am, you can schedule it anytime, 10 days out, whatever the pleasure the board is.
Well, 10 days out, is there, is June 10? Is there any way we can make a special call meeting to have it?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you were saying on the 10th, we just do a workshop and go to a regular meeting, and I have that.
But he also said when, he suggested that we have a public meeting before the public hearing, and the public hearing is also your tent.
So let me give you an illustration. So I'm recommending you have a public input meeting. Maybe you could have that next Tuesday night, okay? Just have the chance to come in and tell you their thoughts. Give them some time to look over this document. It'll be posted online, it'll be a town hall. Give them some time, and then talk to you all at public input about the budget.
But what, what Tuesday next week, that wouldn't give us 10 days.
No, it would not. This is just public input. I'm trying to differentiate the difference here. Public input, and then schedule the public hearing. Y'all could do the public hearing anytime you want, you just have to give 10 days notice to the public. And then they would have a second chance to come in and say something at the public hearing.
And even though we would have that workshop on the 10th potentially, it doesn't mean that we actually have that other meeting on the 10th. We could have that later than the 1st.
Correct. Yes, sir, you are correct. So after the 9th, here's long and short of it. After the 9th, as long as you have a statute quarterly, as long as you have a public hearing, you can adopt the budget anytime. And that public hearing has to be at least 10 days out. But I'm recommending again that the public have some input in a separate meeting and then have the public hearing, but whatever y'all's pleasure is.
And the public input meeting doesn't need a special meeting because we would all be there, uh, be acting according to rules?
It would be, if you do it other than on the 10th, it'd have to be a special call meeting for that public engagement.
Well, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but what if we did do next Tuesday, And that's where we listen to what the public says?
Could we get through this so we can listen to it?
Okay.
Okay. Well, there's going to be a, I think earlier you said there's going to be a, I thought Finance Committee meeting as well, and for this, for our question, jury?
Yes, sir. Monday night, I talked with the Finance Chair today. I asked them to meet again now that I have the final product. I gave them a snapshot last week, but everything wasn't 100%, and they were in favor so far, but they have not seen the final product that I'm recommending. So I asked Chairman Parks to convince the committee, we're going to notice that tomorrow for the Finance Committee meeting, and they've decided on Monday night at 6 o'clock.
So should we wait till we have that public input hearing until after we've heard whatever recommendations or advice the Finance Committee gives on the 2nd? That way we can talk about that in the end of the schedule?
Do you think we can do it right after that meeting?
What about Parks? Are we still too close?
Well, also, so we could have the, and I don't mean to be talking all about this, but on the 10th, as our regular meeting, we could then, Twig, we could then pick out a public input period as well as go in and schedule the meeting to adopt the budget after that.
Yes, sir, you could.
So we could hear from the Finance Committee on, well, wait for them to talk about it on the 2nd, have our meeting on the 10th, we can discuss it, and then we can have public input period after that, and then schedule the adoption.
If I may, I would recommend before y'all have a discussion on the budget, that you listen to the public what they want. That's a strong recommendation to me. I think they need the chance to comment on this proposed budget.
Are we able to have that to the 10th?
You can have it anytime you want. I'm just saying before y'all discuss it and make a decision on it, I think you need to get Finance Committee's input and the public's input.
If we're running on the 10th, we could add that to it and listen to their input as well. And that'd be less meetings and less things for the upstairs here than what they had. That would make things easier on them as well, but it's already, it's already noticed that meetings will be on the 2nd Tuesday. Could we not potentially have both?
We could have both. We have a day next week. For those who can't make it next week, we have another opportunity.
We could do the 5th next week, and then like you said, if people could, then we can add it to the 10th so that there will be one specific period that people only comment on that subject as the meeting on the 10th.
Not yet, Janelle.
Thursday.
Thursday probably better.
Janelle, are you with us?
I'm good with Thursday.
Yes, I'm good with that. I can do those.
Well, I want to hear from you here. You hear us?
John, how does the 5th for you?
Yeah, 5th, John.
Can you do the 5th, John?
At what time?
What time? 6:00 or 6:30? 6:30 regular time? Do we need to make that as a formal vote, or can we just...
I don't think you need a motion. I'll get the department to do a special notice that we're going to have a meeting for public input on the 25-26 budget.
On Thursday, June 5th at 6:30 here.
Is that open?
Are you...
Mr. Bacon, is that open? Thursday?
Yes.
Sure.
That would be Thursday, the 5th.
The 5th.
Thursday, the what?
The 5th.
The 5th. Someone has it from 1:00 to 6:00. So if we're running out faster, can we have it at 6:00?
Can we have it at 7:00?
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time?
Mr. Joyner's, I can ask you...
30. Sure.
Just like you're asking me, you're neck in the woods. Do y'all put yours during the regular meeting or have a special time?
So we would say public comment prior to, so we have a budget work session that lasts longer, and we take public comment on the budget during that budget work session. And then obviously, the public has the chance to inform you at your public hearing on the budget. So if you were to set it up earlier in that day.
So we're going to have the public, we're going to have the workshop on that Tuesday, is that right? Is that what we're all bringing in the workshop?
Yes.
Would it make sense to have the public comment around the workshop instead of having it on the 5th? That way it would be on time. So if it works, we might...
Your only compression point to work back from is July 1st. A 10 days notice off of July 1st. Everything before that, you have time. So what I hear as a manager that's offering a lot of, a lot of different options on that, I think double stacking it and taking input from the public, and then basically you taking input from your manager there about as he presents in more detail and answers your questions in front of the public is perfectly appropriate and would satisfy a couple of different goals there.
How do you all feel about that? Is actually having together the public, well, how many of the workshops?
So far that we've seen, we might got to maybe five or six here. There's a lot of new things.
All right, let's look back to it.
I think we could give the public plenty of opportunity to get the back. I'm interested to see what else we've got here.
All right, let's pick this back up after the computer, please.
So this slide is on the wall there, and looking in front of you, council, is Departmental Operating and Capital Cost Recommendations for this year, and this broke out by each department governing body. It's basically you all, professional services is the attorney, auditor, and tax collection money that we pay Gilbert County to collect taxes on our behalf. Administration is the manager, the clerk, and the finance officer, and the proposed PRR part-time position. Property and buildings is just that, property and buildings. Planning is the planning director. That number is kind of high if you simply remember we're under contract with InFocus, where we're in the process going through for that contract, and that's rolling over from this year to next year. Planning boards, that is money for the planning board and board of adjustment. Parks and recreation and maintenance, that is all-inclusive parks, recreation, salaries, maintenance. Community services and committees, that is the other committees that we have standing, the history committee, Trails and Open Spaces, and Jeanette and all her services and community engagement that she does. I want to touch on the maintenance right there. The Finance Committee did meet last week. As I said earlier, they, we had a spreadsheet for them, which I can make available to you all. Currently, the current operating expenses for the maintenance department were $25,000 to the good compared to what we spent on maintenance last year. And then I provided them a page and a half of reactive maintenance things that they have accomplished since February. And so the Finance Committee was very pleased... Um, and so the ma, the Finance Committee was very pleased and felt like that was a good move on the town's part and, and good stewardship of the taxpayer's dollars for them and the Maintenance Department. And if you saw your, uh, weekly report from yesterday that I sent out for the week, we repaired a lot of toilets last week, last week, and I don't know if you've hired a plumber lately, but they're not cheap. I think we replaced or repaired seven toilets across the town that were leaking and causing some problems. Um, so that would have been quite a big bill. So we put those in a weekly report that you know Maintenance is doing stuff. We're not calling contractors. So every time you see that, think about you had to pick up the phone and call a contractor yourself at your house. So, um, they're doing a great job and the, the other thing that, um, I pointed out to the Maintenance Department is when mowing season's done, just like when it's done in your house, they're going to be able to jump in and do a lot of preventive maintenance, um, to make our buildings and grounds look better and last longer. So, um, that page there is a breakdown of each department there. Um, the next page. So this is a fund balance analysis of our fund balance and what's happened since 2010. Um, and what you can see is, uh, is from about 2014, we were going downhill in our fund balance. Um, and there's various reasons for that. Nobody's fault, uh, not pointing fingers at, I mean, that could be taking money out for projects. That could be lots of different reasons. And then you see in 2021, that gym, big spike, that was a revenue replacement from, from the federal government that came in. And then you see where we're currently at. We're sitting at a little over $7.5 million unrestricted in our fund balance. So again, we're very healthy, but I felt like this visual would be helpful to you and the public. The next page is the fund balance analysis of capital expenditures. And you see that we didn't use much of it. Um, and then in last year, we appropriated a lot of money out of fund balance. That was anticipation to finishing our projects. We've not finished them. So that's what that appropriation is. And that, um, we didn't use it though, as you'll see on the next slide. There, as you see in the top right corner for the public, the blue is what was originally requested and the orange is what was actually used in fund balance. So, um, that's what that breakdown was. So we, we appropriated it. If we don't use it, then it goes right back in. And we're going to be using a lot of our fund balance over the next year to 18 months because we've got those big projects and we're going to be turning dirt this fall. And so we're going to be having the use of that money that's in our coffers. The next page is, uh, the property tax rates. Um, and what you see is, is from 2014, the top one is the Fire Department rate. They have raised rates. Uh, I should say the county, it's not the Fire Department does it. The county raises the Fire, uh, District Tax for Somerville. Um, and they've not raised any rates and the Fire Department's not asked for any, uh, until this year. They are asking for about a little over, uh, a penny, about a penny and a half, um, for a tax increase. Again, inflation's gone up, um, 28.7% during these last 10 years. The cost of fire trucks, I was having a discussion with the chief this week. The cost of fire trucks has doubled during that time. So, and you know, they've got to have two sets of turnout gear for their full-time firefighters. I mean, there's all kinds of regulations they have to, and, and they've been very good stewards of hanging on to their money and not asking for an increase. But they are asking for a slight increase this year. During that same time period, you can see in the orange, we had a tax decrease, it looks like in 2013 and 14 year. Um, and we went down to our current tax rate where we are now. And, um, and we failed that until, uh, now, which is my recommendation to go up to five cents to meet that 2,000 standard. So the, the next few pages here, and I'm not going to go into any detail on it. This is an actual breakdown of the actual budget by department. Um, and the first page is the general revenues. I will call your attention that part of our discussions is I cannot finalize a budget until you all give me the approval or the adjustments to the fee scale. So on the 10th, we're going to have to tackle that there if you will. Um, and, um, so just keep that in mind. So, but this is the projected revenues, um, from the different revenue sources that the town, uh, gets taxes from and different revenues. The next page is the general expenditures and it starts there and it goes down through each department and it's broken down by each department and continues on through all the different departments and stuff. And that's broken down for your benefit. And then the last page, we're way, way back, where the last two pages, page 33, I believe it is, is the fee schedule compare, uh, comparisons for the different departments. And this has been updated. Y'all had requested the cost of, uh, each one of these services, so. And, um, and the different towns. So Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, that is my proposed and recommended budget for 2025, 26. And I think it would be appropriate now to discuss when y'all want to have those meetings. We can make sure we've got it corrected and noticed at y'all's place.
Got some questions, I could. Um, the new initiatives, you mentioned.
Can you talk about page 5, please?
Page 5. In-house building for trash. Uh, you mentioned that the building would be done in-house without additional headcount. But a thought I've heard you say that we would have to purchase equipment. What type of equipment are we talking about?
Letter folding equipment, um, postage, those types of stuff.
Like trash can and trucks?
No, sir. No, sir. That would be all inclusive on the actual trash company against it. They would buy all, they'd have their own people, their own trucks, everything. The only thing we would be responsible for doing is assembling out the bill. I also want to, out of these new initiatives, you know, uh, the three services that I picked to recommend you, Mr. Joyner has done a matrix and he's, I would like for him to give his input on the three that I selected for y'all's benefit too, before we end this discussion.
Okay, uh, on page 6, you mentioned the, um, Parks and Recreation. Did I hear you say that we are 25K positive to the good as compared to last year?
Yes, sir.
That's impressive because there's been a long list of improvements and repairs in maintenance that I, that I've been seeing both in our community and, um, and your weekly reports. That's, that's the sound of it.
And, and that, thank you. Um, the staff's doing a great job and I mean, that's the credit to all the hard work and the good dedicated people that we've been able to, to hire. That 25,000 is not taking account all the repairs they have done. Just want to make sure that's clear to, to you all as a board and the public.
On page 10, the property tax rates, the way I'm reading this, um, our town has not increased its property taxes. Well, it has not changed since 2014?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And around that time, the county tax increased, but our town decreased.
Yes, sir. I think in the same year, the fire tax went up and the property tax went down.
Is that common or is that unusual for, for, would they both, in your opinion, would they typically go both go hand in hand or?
It, it, there's really no rhyme or reason. It could be just coincidence. It could have been, you know, I can't speak to what was going on, you know? You know, the Fire Department's, yeah, as a whole, asks for money when they need it. I think it's remarkable. They've not asked for money in 10 years with the price of everything.
And you said that inflation rates, is that from 2015 to present has gone up 28.7%?
Yes, ma'am, and that's not compounded. So if you compounded that, it would actually be even more. That's just if you added this year 3, this year 4, this year 1, this year 5, 2, if you were to add that up. Um, and that was taken right straight from the social security column, uh, inflation rates. So if you compounded that year over year, it would be more than that. But just simplistic, it's gone up 28.7%.
I use, um, the computer. We're live off of the computer.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Clark? Mr. Doggett, do you have any questions?
No, just one minute.
Mr. Hamilton, do you have any questions?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, I'd like for Mr. Joyner to, he's done a lot of research here. I'd like to give you his thoughts about three services that I'm recommending. Um, because we did do that matrix and that was one of the things I think y'all were expecting some input from that, so.
Yes.
I think when I talked to you guys last, I said the matrix, like anything worth doing is going to take longer than the current time.
And year?
Um, what we have, uh, or what you guys had before budget. Um, so the managers correct and have been, I believe we call them bloodhanging fruits, but some of the services that, how we wanted to identify, um, I've only done, uh, what I call my initial gathering of research, but what I'm not going to do is come to you and recommend a service that may be service number eight on the final matrix. In the beginning of a budget process and then go back to your after-budget process and say, oh, well, actually that one that I told you we could do really quickly ends up being priority number eight when we flesh out all of the input and research. Um, so I did enough of the matrix to make sure that these things would fall, uh, within the top. Actually all, um, fell within the top five. Um, so everything we're going to talk about, I have, uh, full confidence that we should be talking about and that you incorporated this into your budget. It will have a document in the future that probably tells you that was a, a good idea. Um, because baseline, we know what the math is on these things. We've identified them as being existing services, services that we will not decrease any service level in, uh, services in every area of we are attempting to create a couple of things. Uh, one is sustainability. That's heard that from y'all. You want a process that you don't have to redo in six months and you want something that can last for a community that is planning for a long runway on its future. Um, and so with that, I'm going to just go through a couple, uh, of the things to answer some of your earlier questions. Uh, like one, uh, just adjusting for inflation, if you just had your tax rate at, uh, 2014 numbers, it would be 1.9 today. I think your proposed budget is 1.6. Um, so you're adjusting for inflation, you're about $300,000 behind the curve. Um, and that's just on a baseline timeline. So congratulations on having roughly 248% of what the state, uh, also says that you're required to have in your fund balance. Uh, that is a, a good number. Um, the, in looking at services, there's a couple of, uh, what I would call sweet spots. Um, but one is, uh, in your budget, it's listed as a public safety partnership. I think there's a couple of opportunities for public safety partnerships. I was going to expand on manager was discussing. Um, it looks a lot like community policing. Um, and it is a partnership, um, that is very similar to what other communities have adopted with their county sheriffs. Um, each of those, and I've looked through about 25 different interlocal agreements where county sheriffs do this in municipalities ranging from 6,000 to 14,000 people, all within North Carolina, all within the past 10 years. Uh, those contracts range from, um, in-kind services between the two agencies to, uh, $7 million for full, complete, uh, services that basically replace the department because the, the town felt that they could, uh, provide a better service at a better rate by doing it this way. Um, so it's a full gamut there. Um, the conversation that I've heard around that lines up perfectly for y'all with Guilford County in, um, truly identifying what Somerville is looking for. Um, all of these cases also give you scorey metrics behind them. So, uh, right now you don't get to meet quarterly with the Sheriff's Department and understand what crime rates are doing. Sure that the sheriff will do that for you if you're asked. You haven't been measuring anything, so you don't truly know where you are. Every recommendation I'm going to give you also comes with metrics behind it. So when you get to next budget year, you have little numbers to look back at and say, we did this, here's the numbers for public. Um, so the, the first is a community partnership. I think there's a couple of those. Uh, the second is a, the solid waste contracting. Municipalities are often, um, short sell themselves by saying, we're the billing agency for, um, this particular service. And, and you are, but you're also the chief negotiator for your community with all outside parties that, um, wish to engage in business, specifically in a business that you have the statutory authority to provide. Um, so in this case, it is a, uh, re-owning of a service. Um, but what it does is provide on a couple of fronts. There are some, some, I understand y'all have services that you, uh, would like to formalize. There is also things that are out there that are a couple of years out, five, six years out, 10 years out in some cases, um, that by owning these services, you help control the timelines of those. Um, for instance, DEQ permits, water permits, watershed permits. Well, uh, you don't currently have, uh, control over your service provider because they have a lot of different bosses. By allowing them to have one boss to negotiate with, uh, you provide more control. Um, so, uh, in other communities, some of the, uh, USC school, they were just studying on this in the 80s and then wanting to do the 90s. Um, I don't know who was really interested in trash, but someone was. And there's side benefits, roadside dumping, um, because everyone has access to the trash, right? Where it's going across the board and it's a controlled service. When the town staff notices something, you know how a contractor that can help you enforce. Um, the reason we picked up trash is because we don't want trash to get where it doesn't belong. Um, this gives you an enforcement capability to ensure that's happening for the community and the environment. Um, and the, the last is a three-pronged in listening and talking. Um, public safety is important, life crime rates are important, um, keeping your community culture is important. Uh, all of those things come together, uh, in streetlights and this is the weird municipal narrative. Uh, but you can go find, um, intersections that will be safer, um, that will be more clear, that will have line of sight issues that will be mitigated. Um, it is truly a public safety service. That is why, um, it is lined out, um, early on as a thing that we were providing as public safety along the roadway. Um, so, uh, there's certainly a, I'm by no means saying that you should go build streetlights everywhere, but I, I do believe, uh, that the manager has a proposal, um, that streetlights add a service that is scalable, um, that is also, uh, when we're hitting these other services and when you're doing service of any kind, I always like for it to fall into multiple buckets that, um, in the future, if you have, you have strategic planning that we follow. This meets strategic initiative number one, three, four. Um, and so we're setting it up such that, um, the program scales, but it also fits into multiple buckets and multiple priorities. So for all of these things, the more, uh, more people it makes happier, the more problems it solves, the better off we are. Um, all of these scored really high on those three things, uh, because of, um, a lot of input and a lot of, uh, other communities that have done similar things and they've, they've done them close by you. Um, and fortunately, uh, for you guys, I can also see all of their tax rates. And even if you were to do all of the things that are in the manager's budget, um, and a little more, you would still have a lower tax rate than surrounding communities that are providing, um, services that are quality and to the level that you would often respectable and, and she will, uh, this puts you in line with them. And I certainly, um, look forward to bringing you a whole matrix, but I wanted you to understand the, uh, talk to the manager on these three and just fully bet that the math lines up, um, that the policy lines up and that any of the things he's pursuing are trying to achieve multiple buckets of work for you. Madam Mayor, Pro Tim, I think I've, uh, run through it. I have, uh, a fair amount of information that you will see on service matrix. None of you have heard from me or I, I, you won't hear the part where I said, and this is for Councilman Clay, so to make sure that the numbers work on this. Um, because I intentionally not talked to any of you, uh, while doing, uh, this matrix. not talked to any of you while doing this matrix. I have all the numbers, I have all the information, I'm happy to talk with you forward. I will bring you a full service matrix later in the summer, but I truly want that to be a document that you can hold out of your back pocket and swear by, and so I'm going to vet it to that degree. Some of these folks are working on budgets right now, so I want to make sure all my numbers are exactly accurate.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Joyner?
I think I will, but I'm, I've got to think about the multiple on, okay.
Mr. Clay, Mr. Doggett?
Thank you.
Okay, does, first, can we, we are going to go into closed session. Do you guys want to talk about any ways, a public input meeting day?
I, I still think it'd be good to do while we're actually ending our workshop around that. I'd love to hear you to be honest, but I, I think that'd be a good time to have the public, it already knows that's the day that we're going to be here, we're going to be talking about it. I think that's a good time to have it. If there's any other times I would go into that too, but I suggest that we have it.
My only thing is, I wouldn't want to necessarily decide on the budget on the 10th if we have public input on the 10th and our workshop on the 10th, because I want to be able to digest.
I don't think we would actually have the.
So then we would count 10 days and have a special call meeting to approve the budget.
So, so yeah, he, he wouldn't, we wouldn't, the idea originally wasn't to actually have a budget pre-identified, right?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
So there would still be another special call meeting after that?
Yeah, sometime for the, is that the right incident for me to say? Uh, I'm on track, that's fine.
So, Mr. Manager, how would that work? We, we talked about having our workshop where we could talk at, I think we said around 5 o'clock, at 4 o'clock that day, and then the public input would be at the regular meeting on June 10th, and we would have like a special portion just for budget talk and not, and the public comments would be totally separate on other subjects. Is that how it would be done?
Yes, ma'am, it could work that way. I'm going to switch roles. If I was sitting in your seat before I directed the manager what to do, I would want to hear from the public first, what y'all are proposing, if I'm understanding right, just having a workshop and then hearing from the public. And that, you know, that's, so I'm just, I'm switching roles. If I was, if I was in your seat, I'd want to hear from the public first and what they want, and then you have your, you have where the manager is, we'll have the input from the finance board, then I would have my little workshop. And then once, once you're satisfied with the workshop, I would want to then schedule the public hearing 10 days out, which is another chance for the public to have input, but you would test that, but.
I think so, but the idea of the fifth, is that what it was earlier?
I, I would like it separate, and I would like it, you know, to hear the finance and then the second, and then the public on the fifth, then we have our workshop on the 10th, and then we'll figure out a date to.
I agree. So what time would we do?
Um, 6:30, because everybody's used to that time.
And I can, I can either bring the report from the finance committee or I thought I was, I can ask one of the representatives to be here for input. The other, the other thing is, is I'm in favor of the way y'all are now leaning towards is the four, is the 10th at 4 o'clock would be hard for a lot of the public to get off of work and be here too, so.
So do you, what do you need from us now? Is this consensus, do you know?
Just consensus that you want me to advertise for a special call meeting on June the 5th at 6:30 PM to have public input? That would be the only thing on the agenda.
Yes, I need to ask, you said that there was somebody here until 6?
You're right.
So should we move it to 7?
That would be sick. I think we could convince them to get out in time.
Okay.
But that, I would go with 7. Gives us time to set up.
Out of abundance of caution, I would recommend 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And hopefully that video worked.
Okay, Mr. Doggett, are you okay with, Mr. Clay? I know you are. Janelle, Janelle?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. So it would be Thursday, the 5th of June, a public input meeting at 7:00 PM here at the community center. Yes, please.
I move this on to closed session number A3 of the relevant statute. We're just checking for the five minutes.
Uh, any second.
Second.
Um, the motion is to move into the attorney, the closed session to consultant and attorney. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
What is that June statute number? Number nine, number? It's supposed to be on there. Two, that's got to be on there.
Yeah, well, orange, can you take it with you? Okay.